The Fortuna City Council meeting for Monday, April 15th. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, you want to get Mike here?
Yes, as the council is aware, Councilmember Loci is attending remotely this evening under AB 2449, which is legislation that was passed following some of the COVID-related exceptions to the remote meeting protocol under the Brown Act. And in order to allow him to attend remotely, the council needs to go through a couple of steps to get to that point. The first one is because we didn't know that Councilmember Loci would need to attend remotely before the agenda was published, we first need to amend the agenda to add authorization as an action item for him to attend remotely. And so the first step is I'd ask the council to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an item for approval of Councilmember Loci's remote attendance. And then the second step, if that's added to the agenda, would be to actually take up that item.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We amend the agenda to add Councilmember Loci, a remote meeting.
That works.
A second. Okay, do we need a roll call for that?
We do.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Loci?
He wouldn't vote yet.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent? Yes.
So the second, under AB 2449, the council actually has to approve Councilmember Loci's remote attendance because the reasons he needs to attend is for quote unquote "emergency circumstances" as defined under AB 2449. Emergency circumstances mean any physical or family medical emergency that prevents a member from attending in person. And so to do that, the member has to provide the council a very brief description of the circumstances and also has to disclose whether anybody over the age of 18 is in the room with him and the nature of the relationship. And then after that, the council can actually make a motion to approve his attendance and then he'll be seated as a regular member. So, Councilmember Loci?
You're muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I am attending this meeting by Zoom because I had a family member from out of the Fortuna area become extremely ill, and there are no persons over the age of 18 in the room with me.
So with that, unless the council has any questions for Councilmember Loci, a motion can be made to approve his attendance via remote means.
I'll make a motion to approve his attendance via remote feed.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now can we have roll call, or was that considered roll call? Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Loci?
Here.
Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Trent?
Here.
Okay, got all that out of the way. Let's see, our first item is a presentation introduction of the treatment plant operator.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'd like to introduce the newest member of the Treatment Division of the Public Works Department, Robert Gerhart. Robert's a longtime resident of Fortuna, and he's been with us a little over a month, and he's doing a good job.
Thank you, I'm Robert Gerhart. I've lived in Fortuna for just about 25 years now, four kids, all of them went through school, completed kindergarten through high school here in Fortuna, so thank you very much for the opportunity to work for this city. Thank you.
Welcome to Fortuna. Okay, now we have a presentation of draft proposed water and wastewater five-year rate adjustment.
All right, well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we're going to have our consultant Jacobs Engineering review with you the draft rate study that was included in the packet. But first, I'm going to run through just a few slides about kind of how the city came to this point, and then I'll turn it over to Kurt from Jacobs Engineering. So, Sienna's going to pull up a PowerPoint in just a minute, but I'll just start by providing a brief introduction for the council and for the public in attendance. So, the city has two enterprise funds, one water enterprise fund and a second wastewater enterprise fund. The city owns a portable water facility, a wastewater treatment facility, four water storage tanks, over 100 miles of conveyance pipes, and 20-plus staff positions within the water and wastewater enterprise funds. The city funds operation, maintenance, and capital improvements, and the way that the city pays for these operations, maintenance, and capital improvements are through a monthly utility bill. Next slide, please, Sienna, she can go forward two slides. And so, the last time the city did a rate increase was fiscal year 1011, so it's been almost 14 years since the last rate increase. Since that time, as council, I'm sure, is aware, we've had a number of inflationary pressures, including PG&E, wage and personnel cost increases. You can go to the next slide, please, Sienna. One of the big reasons that we pushed to get this done this year was because of our bond rating. And so, the city has two revenue bonds, one water and one wastewater bond from 2017. And as part of issuing those bonds, we agreed to have a debt service coverage of 1.25. And so this essentially means that the annual net revenues of the system must be 125% of the system's annual debt service requirements. And so far this year, it's projected that the city will not meet those requirements, and so that has a significant impact on the city's bond rating, and so that would impact future debt issuances by the city, which would lead to higher issuing costs and higher, you know, debt service costs to the city. So there are some ways to mitigate that in the near term for this year and next year, but we want to make sure that we have enough revenue to cover those bond debt service requirements. And then, as the council is aware, we're doing a large wastewater project, and so we wanted to make sure we capture that project within these rates. Next slide, please, Sienna. And as the council's been made aware over the last few budget cycles, this is just kind of puts it into graph form, so the green line is our annual requirements from our water and sewer rates that are essentially our expenses. And you can see that has been higher over the last five years than the revenue we receive from our rates. And so the way that we've been covering those gaps for the last five years is by pulling from reserves. And so, it's definitely overdue for some rate increases to ensure that our rates, our revenue is covering our operating expenditures. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Kurt from Jacobs Engineering. We started this process contracting with Jacobs in December of 2023. They've developed the draft rate study, which was included in your packet with findings and recommended rate adjustments, and those are going to be presented this evening. And then as part of this item, staff is seeking council direction and concurrence to move forward with rate adjustments as proposed in the draft rate study. And the next step would be the Prop 218 process, and we'll get into that in more detail as we get further on in the presentation. But at this point, I want to turn it over to Kurt from Jacobs Engineering to go through the draft report with you guys.
Thank you, Aaron. And before I get started, I just wanted to take a second to thank the city for the opportunity to work with your staff on this rate study. They've been great to work with so far, with as far as answering questions and getting all the data needed to run the analysis, so I just wanted to give them a thank you for that. So, some of this will be a little repetitive to what Aaron was just covering, just to give some backgrounds and objectives on the rate study itself. But the main objective is just make sure we're generating sufficient revenues so that the utilities can cover their financial obligations, operating expenses, capital needs, debt service requirements that are part of the bond covenants. We also want to make sure there's sufficient revenue to generate operating and capital reserve funds so that they can, so the utility is able to address changes in operations as well as upcoming capital needs. As Aaron mentioned, it's been a little while since the last rate increase, and since I had had 2012, so I apologize for the typo there, but over the last 12 years, just to give a little perspective, the Consumer Price Index for California has gone up almost 40% in those 12 years, and the California Construction Cost Index, which is probably a better gauge for capital projects, has gone up nearly 70%. So that just gives a little perspective as to where, how costs have been changing and how the utility's been having to use some of their reserves just to keep operations and capital going. There's been additional economic pressures caused by COVID and some of the post-pandemic supply chain disruptions, as well as causes increases to labor market pressures, so that's caused you to have to make some adjustments to your wages to keep staff. And then, finally, the water and wastewater system are both in need of capital improvements to just replace agent infrastructure, but also to take on, to meet regulatory requirements on the wastewater side. So just to go over a few assumptions, and I won't go over each of these, but these are some of the assumptions that went into the rate study itself. As you can see at the bottom, we have our beginning fund balances for both the operating funds and capital funds for both systems. The wastewater system had about $13 million total in reserves, $9 million of that in the capital fund, and the water side was closer to $6.5 million, so that's sort of the starting point for both of the utilities. And one of the things you'll hear me talk about, oh, sorry, I missed one slide. I didn't have it in my printout here, but one of the big things that we wanted to try to accomplish was maintaining a sufficient fund balance, so both on the operating side as well as the capital side. So on the operating side, we had a 180-day operating fund balance, so that's about six months. And on the capital side, we had a $3 million target for the water utility and a $5 million for the wastewater utility, and that's just to give you an idea of kind of what the needs are and the future needs are in the system. So, the rates have been set to meet those two target balances. And then as far as the debt financing assumptions, we did assume additional debt will be issued on the wastewater treatment project. The city's been in discussion with the state on receiving a grant, as well as some low-interest loan to fund that project, so they have some pretty favorable rates of about, just under 2% interest rate and about a 30-year term, so those are pretty good debt financing rates. So, one of the things you'll hear people talk about within the rate-setting world is revenue requirements, so what those are comprised of is your operating expenses, your annual debt service, if you have some, which you do, any cash-funded capital, so the city has kind of had a history of mainly paying for capital projects on a page-to-go basis, and if that's the strategy, those reserves are needed to fund those projects. Any contributions to reserves, in the event you kind of go below your targeted balances, you want to build those up, and then administrative costs for the utility in the city. And then you kind of, you back out what we call non-rate revenue, which is interest income, connection fees, any miscellaneous revenue that is not generated through rates. And so that gets you to how much money you need to generate through your monthly rates. So that's what we refer to as revenue requirements. So, on the left-hand side, you see your projected operating expenses from 2024 through 2029, and this is on the water side. They're expected to increase from about $2.1 million to almost $2.7, which is about a 5% increase per year. And we had, in some of the assumptions, listed some of our assumptions on salary adjustments, benefit changes, capital cost inflation, and other inflation pressures, so that worked out to be about 5% per year. And on the right hand, it's just showing the existing debt service on the 2017 water revenue bond, so it's right around $400,000 per year. The water capital program is needed to replace agent infrastructure and meet projected water demands. Some of the projects that we included in the CIP here include some water line replacement projects, a water main replacement, and they're almost, actually, all the big items were all water line replacement projects, and you can see, we, over the analysis period, we have about $9 million in capital projects for the water system. So, when we were looking at what sort of rate increases, there's a couple different approaches you can take. You can try to spread them all out over a number of periods, a number of years, or you can try to just have a larger increase on the front end. The larger increase on the front end generally, over the five-year period, will end up with a lower overall rate after the five years than if you sort of stagger it over time. So, we went with a larger rate increase on the water side. So, the first year is about 60%, and that's going to kind of catch you up from the past 10 to 12 years where there has not been a rate adjustment, as well as meet some of those other needs we talked about as far as building up, keeping the reserve levels up to an appropriate level, and maintaining that 1.25 debt coverage service ratio. And you can see beyond the first year, we get down to more just inflationary adjustments. So again, it's really just to try to, it's almost like a catch-up adjustment in that first year. The chart on the right just sort of shows you, as your revenue requirements are changing over time, that's the bar, the sort of nearly flat kind of lighter line is, that's how much revenue you're generating now, and how much you would generate over time if you had no rate increases, so it's a pretty flat line. And then the line on the top is what rates you will generate with the projected rate increases. The next slide shows the potential impact to a monthly bill for water, assuming six CCF per month. Currently, that's around $28.74. It jumps up to about nearly $46 after year one, which would be the first year of the increase, and then, as I mentioned, we sort of have more inflationary adjustments beyond that. After the five-year period, the water bill will be nearly $54 a month. The line in this chart represents if a consumer is just using the minimum, which is 3 CCF in the winter and 5 CCF in the summer. And you can see the impact of just that little, the lower water use and what that bill would look like, so it's around 20, just under $25 currently, and it goes to just over $40 after the five-year period. So that's sort of the highlights of the water, the water system rate study. I'm going to now jump over to wastewater. So wastewater currently has operating expenses of about $3 million per year, and over the analysis period, those are going to go to about $3.8 million. And again, we're looking at about a 5% per year adjustment in your operating expenses. On the right side, you'll see the annual debt service. The bar on the bottom represents the 2017 revenue bond for wastewater, and that's currently, it's around $700,000 a year. And you can see that the line above, the bar chart that's added, starting in '26 and beyond, is, that's the new debt service that's associated with the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, you can see the debt service goes up from about $700,000 to almost $2 million. And again, so, to Aaron's point earlier about needing to meet that 1.25 debt coverage requirement, that becomes a bigger issue when you start issuing debt of this size. So you can see that, you can see it doesn't quite, it more than doubles the debt service payment. So what, why do we need to issue the debt? Well, the main reason is on the wastewater treatment, this has to do with the wastewater treatment plant and the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System compliance. So that project, in our analysis, was around $35 million. There's some additional capital projects that have to do with more just maintaining or replacing agent infrastructure, wastewater lining projects, some main projects, et cetera. So at the bottom, you'll see that on the wastewater side, we had nearly 48 mil, a little over $48 million in capital. Again, the vast majority of that is in the one project. The one project did also assume some grant funding of about $5 million, but again, most, and then we also used $5 million in reserves, so the rest of the project cost was going to be debt-financed. So on the wastewater side, we've got in year one about a 40% increase, and then year two, it's about 25%, and then we start getting down to where we have sort of inflationary adjustments the last year four and five. Some of the increases are driven by just catch-up for operating costs, but the other increases are to meet those debt service payments that are going to be increasing, as well as the debt service coverage requirement. So all of these rates are set to meet a coverage requirement of where at 1.3 or higher in each year. So similar to the water slide, we saw, you've got, the bar charts represent your revenue requirements from rates. The sort of flatter line is where you're at today, kind of projected forward, and then we have what that line looks like when the increases are implemented. Impacts to potential customer bills for wastewater, assuming six CCF of water use, you're currently at about $47.36. Over the analysis period, you get up to nearly $97 by fiscal year '29. The line in the chart represents the minimum wastewater bill that someone would pay, and that's at just under $40 currently, and goes to nearly $80 in fiscal year 2029. So one of the things we looked at was trying to kind of compare, what is Fortuna's rates? How do they line up with some other communities in the area? And again, we use the same consumption level of six CCF. And it's a little hard to see probably some of this, but we looked at rates for Fortuna, Eureka, Humboldt, Arcata, and the city of Riedel, and, I'm sorry, and McKinleville. So currently, Fortuna is on the left-hand side of the chart. The bill using six CCF is that second bar, that's about $76. After year one of the proposed rates, the combined bill is around 112. So that's the bar that's right in the middle of the chart. To the right-hand side, city of Riedel, Arcata, and Humboldt are the highest three that we see here. So again, this is, you know, it's a little hard sometimes to do a comparison with other communities, just because systems are different, policies are different, but this at least gives you kind of an idea of what other neighboring communities are charging for water and sewer. The information used to develop these rates was just used publicly, posted information on their rates that are available on the city's websites. And then we also kind of looked at what is Fortuna's rates, how are they going to compare over the next few years? And it's a little hard to tell, some of that information's not as available on the internet, but we do know there are a few communities that did some rate adjustments recently. Whether these adjustments have been adopted every year is unclear, but in their rate study, this is what was shown in there for their future rate increases. So again, we have Fortuna's shown at the bottom with Eureka, McKinleville, and Humboldt on the top, so these were the communities that we actually could find information on what their projected rates are going to look like. We found information through 2027 for each of these communities. Fortuna's currently the lowest, with the rate increases will go up to slightly higher than McKinleville, who still has the lower, lowest rates in the area after the proposed increases. And then, Eureka and Humboldt will both be higher than Fortuna. Fortuna's will be pretty in line with Eureka after 2027. So again, just for some perspective, the Fortuna after 2027 combined bill will be around 142 if you use six CCF. If you use the minimum, it'll be about 117. So that just gives you a little idea on where those residential rates lie. So that was our look at the water and wastewater rates. We also, the other thing that hadn't been adjusted in wise, the connection fees, and we just did an inflationary adjustment on the connection fees using the California Construction Cost Index to bring those fees up from 2012 to 2024. And again, these connection fees are used to fund new capital projects that are necessary to serve new growth, or to reimburse the city for existing facilities that have capacity to serve new growth. So these are for new connections. So when we reviewed the water connections, again, it's based off of a living unit equivalent, which is essentially a residential customer. The rate, the connection fees are based on meter size, and that has to do with the capacity of each meter, so there's a meter equivalency factor that's developed by the American Water Works Association. So a typical residential meter is a 5/8 by 3/4 inch meter. The larger the meter, the more potential demand from that meter, that's the more demand's placed on the system, so those connection fees for larger meter sizes are going to be more expensive. So, again, we show the current fees for Fortuna on the left, the proposed on the right. We made a few adjustments on the meter equivalencies to bring it more in line with the current AWWA M1 manual, and that mostly impacted the larger meters. But you can see the proposed connection for a 5/8 inch meter is going to go from about 2100 to about 3700. And then again, those just adjust based on the meter equivalencies. On the wastewater side, similar adjustments, we used inflationary adjustments to bring those up to 2024. Wastewater connection fees are based on a living equivalent, unit equivalent for a single-family home with 14 fixture units. Everything else is kind of based on that 14 fixture units and the fraction thereof. So, up to 14 fixture units is currently $4,445. If you use the California Construction Index and inflate that, it gets up to about $7,500. And again, that's per living unit equivalent. So, recommendations and next steps. So, our recommendation is based on the work we've done with the city staff, is to adjust water and sewer rates in each year to generate sufficient revenues to meet the utility's financial commitments. Again, those commitments include operating, debt service, capital, as well as some of your reserve targets. Continue to actively pursue other sources of funds to pay for planned capital expenditures. They did receive some funding for the treatment plant project. The state programs have been seeded the last few years with some federal dollars, so there might be some additional money available, so our suggestion- So our suggestion would be to go try to find some more both, for both systems if possible. There's maybe some project, even though the water system CIP isn't as big as possible, you could get a loan or possibly some principal forgiveness on a project that could help make the rate increase lower. So look for, look for those opportunities to find some additional sources of funding. After adoption of the rate study, proceed with notifying impacted property owners per Proposition 218 of the proposed rate increases. The notification mailer will begin the minimum 45-day protest period for, per Prop 218. Then once the, after that 45 days is up, proceed with adopting the proposed rates after completion of the hearing and balloting process. Should the, the city should adopt the proposed rates if it's not opposed by a majority of property owners through the balloting process. So that's the presentation on the water and wastewater rate study. If you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer those, and I might have Aaron help me out as well.
Any questions from council?
Going back over the initial jump, and was that primarily a catch-up to get us to 125% of operating costs for the reserves or?
I think there are multiple things at play that would cause that big jump. I think one is just catching up with operating costs that have, that have increased over time. And it's also to keep up with that 1.25 debt coverage requirement is a big part of it because you were under one, or projected to be around one or so. So that's a pretty big hurdle that you have to, you know, if you're going to try to take that on in one year, it's going to result in a big increase. And then there's just additional capital needs in the system. If you use pay-as-you-go strategy and you're going to pay with your capital projects with rate revenue or reserves, you need to maintain those reserve levels to a certain point so that you can do those projects successfully. But then you also want to have sufficient O&amp;M reserves on hand to handle things like when you have, you know, if your labor rates are changing a little more than you might expect just because of the competitive nature right now of the labor market. So you want to keep those reserve levels up so that you can respond as necessary to keep your employees.
Any other questions from council?
Did we look at starting at a lower increase to begin with? Did we run the numbers on that? And what did that look like?
We do have an alternate scenario that we could share that kind of sparsed it out into a two or three years. The caveat to that is that the end rate will be actually higher than if we go with this particular scenario. And that's, you know, in order to ensure that we have enough in our reserves for capital projects. So the trade-off to kind of sparsing it out over a few years is that the end rate would actually be higher. And we could share that with you.
Yeah, I think I'd like to look at that because it might be that even if it is higher at the end, we might need that higher rate at that end, just the cost of inflation over the years. And rather than doing it one big jump at one time, I think to me, it would make more sense to do it, whatever you're thinking, 20, 30%, 20%, that type of increase than doing one huge jump and then dropping it down to 5%.
Can you, can you put the slide back up? We did do, we did a little sensitive or different scenario for both water and sewer where we tried to spread it out a little bit. I don't have the rates calculated, but I can show you what the increases are for those. So let me see if I can find that real quick here. Turn this off.
While you're looking for that, can I ask another question about the new connect fees? That's quite a jump. Are we looking at doing that all at one time or spreading that out over years to the increase as well? I mean, from 2,500 to 6,000, 7,000 is a huge jump.
That would be all to start next fiscal year?
At one time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now we're active here. Hang on. Sorry. Thank you. Pardon me.
And is there a reason for it being all at one time? I mean, does it, does it cost that much for an install a connect fee? Or is there, could we look at doing a portion of it, doing that gradually as well?
Do you have any more info on that? I think, I mean, the purpose is to capture the cost to, you know, for all the infrastructure that you're essentially buying into. And so, I mean, we could do it over two or three years.
Well, I know we're trying to make us comparable with the rest of the state. And I understand that. But to jump it up that much, I mean, it's almost three times the amount. That's going to be hard on top of all of the other inflation costs for builders and new homeowners trying to get a loan to build their properties.
Yeah, yeah, the connections, they did go up, both of them went up 70% from where they were. So it is a pretty considerable jump. We'd have to look, I think, and see, you know, how many years you might want to try to potentially phase that in if you wanted to do it over a couple of year period. But I think, I think it's reflecting to the fact that, you know, the capital costs for the utility have increased quite a bit over those years. So it's to try to, you know, make sure that we're reimbursing the city for stuff they've already built, but then also paying for the growth for new facilities that might be needed. And I don't know if that was, Brendan was, okay.
Well, yeah, and I just want to jump in for just a few quick points of clarification on that. And those are, those are great questions, Councilmember Mobley. So the capital connection fees are meant to capture the cost of doing projects to increase service capability and capacity in Fortuna's water and wastewater system. And, you know, as Kurt noted, we're about going on 14 years behind increasing the cost of, of doing those construction projects and those improvement projects that would be collected by, by new service connections. So we'd be proposing to increase it by the California Construction Cost Index just to catch up with the cost of doing those contracted projects to, you know, expand service capacity. They don't necessarily correlate to the cost of, say, the city going out and installing services or things like that. That's covered under another mechanism. With that said, there, you know, the new connections per year aren't a really big revenue source for the city, and we're not necessarily targeting, necessarily trying to be competitive with or at the level of other communities as much as we're just trying to recognize the true cost of making those improvements. But, you know, I would say that's one area where while, you know, staff certainly recommends adjusting things to cover actual cost, that is also an area where there's probably a little bit more flexibility without, you know, without really changing along, a lot of the larger financial goals that we have in the actual rate section, if that helps answer any question.
Can we, can you go back to the slides? So this is the water rate scenario. This just spread it out over a couple of years. So instead of a 60-year, 60%, we went 45 and then 20. The one thing you notice on this one is the reserve level isn't quite as high. Part of the reason the bigger jump is needed is we're trying to keep those reserve levels to a certain, to that 3 million range for water. So this was just kind of an example. We could hone the numbers in a little bit tighter to, you know, make sure that we're, we're really getting those apples to apples and generating the same amount of revenue. But this kind of gives you an idea of what that might look like to spread it out a little bit. Again, you do need, part of the reason for the big jump too is the, that debt, now you'll have, you know, meeting that debt service coverage requirement and trying to make sure we're, we're hitting that. So that's part of the reason why that first year is needed to be as big. For the sewer. It's kind of a similar story, and I apologize, it's not advancing. Oh, there we go. Thank you. I think the sewer, we have like a 45% in year one, and then maybe, and I'm going off memory, but like a 20% year two or so. So this again is trying to spread it out a little bit more over those first few years and still try to maintain that same level of reserves on both operating side and the capital side. So this just kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like. And we could generate rate sheets on what that would look like to spread it out if that would be helpful.
To me, it would, and I don't know what my fellow council members think, but to me, it makes more sense rather than doing a huge jump the very first year. If we can do it, you know, dial that back a little bit and then just maybe do the same jump like this, that's 30% and 30% and then taper down. I think it's a little, going to be a little bit easier for our rate payers to try to fit that in their budget, knowing it's going to come up again the following year so they'll be prepared for that rather than being hit with it all at one time.
Sure.
And same with the connection fees. I don't know that we should be jumping it up that much the very first time if we can maybe spread that out over a three-year period or something. I don't, I don't know what that would look like. I know Aaron's the numbers guy.
Yeah, we can take a look at the capital connection fees, but we won't only be capturing, you know, what we're showing here, but future increases as well. So we'd be even probably higher than, than that 70% range at the end of it, but we can take a look at that.
But to me, that makes sense because rather than waiting 12 years down the road and saying, oh, by the way, we got to do this again, so let's bump it up another, you know, 60, 70%. If we're doing it continuously, it makes more sense and it helps those of us that, which all of us pay, utility bills. But I think it helps everybody to fit it in their budget.
Some of the builders may already have projects in the pipeline and a bridge loaned, and then they find out they got another $3,000 to come up with or something. Doesn't sound like much, but if you're building three or four houses a year, it adds up.
Yeah, they've probably already paid their connection fee, I would guess. But this would be for the new ones that are coming on down the line, yeah.
A few years ago, when the sprinkler became mandatory, the sprinklers in houses became mandatory, which required a larger meter, we were talking about adjusting the price just because they, they're not using that water, but they're required to have a bigger meter because of the sprinkler system. Did that, anything ever come of that?
We continue to only charge the 3/4 meter capital connection charge and not the 1-inch meter for those.
Okay. Any questions? Does council member, or Losi have questions?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. A question and then some comments. Kurt, you mentioned that the, the current debt service cost was around $700,000 a year annually. But I thought I saw either in the staff report or one of the attachments that the current debt service was around 400,000. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, on the water system, it's about 400,000. On the sewer system, the current, and you'll have to forgive me because I don't have my exact number here, but I think it's closer to 700.
So I, you know, I'm hearing the different comments and, you know, overall, this can's been kicked down the road for quite a few years. We've talked about increasing, the need to increase water and wastewater rates for, well, since 2011. And I think it's come up every year. And for whatever reason, there was never an attempt by the council to get these issues addressed. And so now we're facing this, and there's a real need. I, I really, right now, everybody is feeling a pinch with, you know, with the finances the way they are. Everybody's feeling that gas prices, grocery prices, and now on top of that, to increase these rates by 50 or 60 or 40% even, just it is, it is almost unmanageable, especially for a lot of elderly people. I, I think I would be in favor of seeing this increase spread out over the five years as long as the annual debt service payment would be within the 1.25 for the bond requirement that we have. I'm not so worried about the reserve in either water or wastewater, the reserve amounts. But that, that debt service revenue that we need to have on hand would be the issue. I think, I hope that within three years, so it would be year three, four, five, maybe, and I'm just hoping that this would happen, that the economy would be in a little bit better shape, hopefully much better shape than it is right now. And so if we were to look at a 20% increase in each of the years, again, as long as we had that service, debt service payment, that it wouldn't subject the bond requirements to a higher, to a lower rating, I, I would be in favor of doing something like that rather than these huge increases at the very beginning. The other thing with the connection fee, since 2011, I'm pretty sure we've increased those connection fees at least once, if not a couple of times. And I agree that we need to have those increases graduated. And, and that could be over a five-year period as well. So those are my thoughts on this. Plus, I'm wondering about lowering the base rate for water for those one or two-member households. I'm just wondering what kind of an impact that might have. And I understand we're trying to increase rates, not lower the rates. But for a, for a basic rate, I, I think for a lot of people on fixed incomes, that might, you know, that would help out a lot as opposed to having these, these huge increases. Those are my, those are my thoughts.
I had one more question. On the connection fees, can those, are those built into the construction loan or do those have to be paid upfront?
I think it's whatever the developer chooses. They can pay for it with their building permit, or they can choose to fund it through getting a construction loan.
Okay.
I got a question. The, can you go back to the slide with the red bar graph that jumps up at one year and the green line that goes across it?
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
I think you're talking about the revenue requirement one.
Yeah.
Hang on a sec.
Then also, like.
Is there a particular utility that you?
No, I just, one of them jumped up right away in the year, the current year, that one where, I think it's one.
It was the water one.
Right there where it, it looks like, like, why is it such a heavy increase in the annual requirements from the rates right at the first where it jumps up right there to the first purple line? Like, we're sitting here, but it's making that big jump, and then it looks like it's little jumps after that?
Yeah, it was, that was just, as Aaron was sort of saying, you can either kind of try to do it all in one, one time, and then at the end, your rate increase isn't as high overall, or you can sort of try to spread them out and then the rate increase after year five will be, will be higher. So, but it's, again, it's just to meet, meet the different financial requirements we were trying to meet. Water doesn't have as much in reserves as sewer does. So, and they have a smaller revenue base to draw from. So that was part of the reason why their rates need to go, go up a little bit higher from a percentage standpoint.
Yeah, so one of the reasons also I'll add for the, on the expenditure side is we haven't been doing a lot of CIP projects in water. And so the big jump from 23, 24 to 24, 25 is really to capture doing water line replacement projects, 24, 25 through 28, 29. And that's why that big million-dollar jump primarily.
And then also, oh, go ahead, sorry, Brendan.
Oh, I was going to say, thank you, Aaron, and you hit the nail on the head. And just to kind of piggyback on what Aaron stated. to kind of piggyback on, on what Aaron stated there, the, the last few years, you know, we've been really active in, in doing projects in other areas, as the council knows, the police facility project, you know, some of the other big ones that have been happening around town. The next few years, we're really looking at, at playing some catch-up in, in the water system, so that's why you see those big increases, and, you know, we're trying to be aggressive in some water, some water line replacement projects that we desperately need to be doing, so.
Could, could those projects still be done if we did it over a few years instead of all the first year?
They, they could be completed, and, and while we're very happy to, you know, look at some scenarios, and as we kind of hone in on maybe some next steps here, we can, we can talk about what those more specifically would look like to meet our timeline we're trying to move to, and of course, taking in all the great comments and questions you have this evening. The real trade-off we have in lowering the increases is we'd be spending more out of what is effectively our savings account for water and sewer, and so we, we treat those on the utility side, much like the general fund reserve, right, where it's, it's there to capture that rainy day where something goes wrong, we have an emergency project we need to fund, you know, we have lower-than-normal revenues, some other thing that we have to offset with those reserves. So there's a number of things we can do and look at, and really, the trade-off just becomes as to how low we are comfortable in drawing down those reserves before we can build them back up in later years by, you know, spreading those increases over, so. So to answer your question, yes, we could, it just takes us into a point of having, you know, less and less cushion for which we could, you know, address an emergency need or something else that we needed to do at that time, should it happen.
Thank you.
I got one more question. In 2011, was it a one-and-done rate, or was it multiple years?
That was the end of a five-year.
So end of the five-year.
Process as well.
I know we can't look toward the future 100%, but if we're doing this in five years, are we coming back six years later doing the same discussion?
Well, so, from 2010, 11, if we had been doing a 3% increase every year, we would be talking about that this year, 3% increase, to be where, what we're proposing with the 60% increase. So, staff's plan is every five years to be coming back so that we're only doing 2% or 3% increases a year, and not these large 50, 60% increases to catch up from 12 years of not doing anything.
So are, where we're currently at, and you want to increase from just kind of here on out, once we reach that kind of end?
Yeah, try to get some more inflationary adjustments, I guess, from, you know, going forward.
Instead of reactionary, coming in late.
If I could just add one thing, one of the comments council member Losi said is, you know, why haven't we done an increase sooner? And one of the challenges that we've had is we've been on the verge of having multiple of projects proved by the regional board, we've done a study, we've identified a project, and then we've had that kicked out for one reason or another, so our, it's like the, the target keeps changing of what our project's gonna be. You know, initially, we had some projects that we think, thought were gonna be pretty cost-effective across the river, and now, you know, to, to use kind of a groundwater discharge model, we found out we couldn't do that. I mean, this is, this is just over, this is just the last couple, a couple years ago, and now we're moving towards a more expensive, energy-intensive treatment option and keeping our wastewater, our discharge where it is in place, and so, you know, we, we kept putting it off because we thought we were gonna be able to do a certain project, and then we've thrown, been thrown back into uncertainty, but at this point, you know, in, in order to meet that ratio for revenue recovery for our bond, in order to be able to fund the project that, you know, we think is our really last option, which is to go to a higher treatment level, that's why we're, we're bringing it now, but that's, you know, we, we, we didn't have that certainty before, and we kept thinking we'd have those, an idea of what that ultimate treatment and disposal project would be, but it kept changing, so we're, we're kind of stuck without knowing exactly what to, to budget for.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, I, I wasn't commenting that we were kicking the can down the road because, because you were delaying it, because you have brought this discussion forward to the council, you've brought that to us, and it's just not something the council has wanted to tackle. You know, it's, for whatever reason, I'm not really sure, but we've known for a long time that we've needed to increase these rates, both water and wastewater, so it's, you know, it's more on the council that we've been kicking this can down the road than it is on city staff.
No, understood.
Looking at the, on page 4-8, at the percentages increase, I mean, what if we went to like 30, 25, 15, and 8? And then you'd have the same overall increase, but would that still work?
Yeah, I don't know, Kurt, are you, I know the second scenario we provided would be enough to cover our bond ratio and, and into future years as well, but I don't know, how much more room do you think we have in that first year to where we're not hitting our bond ratio?
I mean, the, the biggest, I'd have to go, I'd have to look, but I know on the sewer side, it becomes an issue, an issue again with the debt service related to the treatment plant project, because you're taking on additional debt, so you have to also clear the hurdle on that as well. So it's, there's the immediate need of meeting your current debt service obligations, but then for sewer, the reason you kind of have bumps in year three, like you've seen, is to make, make sure we're still hitting it after that new debt service comes on. So, and we can, we can definitely look at a few different scenarios to see, you know, where, what that, you know, how, what the number is to make sure we're meeting that 1.25 throughout, and then see if there's a way to spread some, spread the increases out over a couple, you know, a three-year period, or, you know, the big, take the big increase and maybe try to spread it out over multi-years instead of a one big-time hit.
I think it makes more sense.
I think the council, yeah, I would like to see some more scenarios on spreading it out a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, but we'll go ahead and open up to public comment now, anybody who would like to make a comment on any of these items, you have three minutes to make a comment. Is there any online?
Yes, Sue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
I don't need that, but thanks. Hi, everybody, just, I don't know that the timing for this could be worse with our economy. You know that I totally understand the need for this, but I think that we, I'm agreeing with you guys on wanting to see some more scenarios with a lower upfront increase. And also, when they were showing the slides that showed the water hookup fee, I think that they showed the 3/4 inch, and it was like 2165 and going up to 3688 or something like that, but I, most of the things that we're doing now are 1-inch, and the 1-inch was a really big increase, and I don't, I can't see that slides, I don't have the packet, but that is just another thing to, to think about, and I like your guys', Chris and Mike, thinking that we could do those across the five years as well, instead of one big jump. As you all know, housing is increasing faster than, I mean, we, we don't even have any houses right now. We had one lady come in today and ask about the price to build, and she was just shocked when I gave her just a rough number, so adding all these other costs is just making everything harder, and I know that you guys are in a tough spot, and we have to do something, I totally get it. At 50%, my water bill for a family of seven last month was $234, so a 50% increase would make it $351. That's a lot, and so when more money is spent by the citizens on water and sewer, less money's gonna be sent, spent on non-essentials, and which will affect our businesses and our sales tax overall. And then your next item, you know, when you're gonna talk about increasing the sales tax, it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot to, to do all in one year. Anyway, thanks for your time, and good luck on figuring all this out.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any more online? If you have a comment, come on up to the microphone and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Havigold Abusk, I just moved here, I got my first water bill actually this month, and I was quite shocked how high it was, I also was just trying to figure out.
Can you move the microphone down a little bit?
Yes, sorry. And also, to, to go back to a point, somebody online brought up the actually decreasing rates possibly for households with one to two members, for example, it seems like the winter rate, it's a flat rate of, it just starts at $67, because it seems like I have about, what is it, like 500 cc is allocated in the wintertime, but I found from my bill, I only used about 2/5 of that water, so one thing I'm curious about is just what is the average water consumption for every citizen in, in the town? And, yeah, just overall, that's, that's a pretty big jump, and also, moving here from Colorado, I would say my water bill was 1/3 of what this is, or the bill that I received here, and I'd also be curious comparing less, less of the water cost across the county and more so with the rest of the nation, and just trying to understand what necessary operating costs are for something such as water and upgrading, you know, old, old sewer lines, and, yeah, it, it's just a tough thing, but it is not gonna be easy, the public is not gonna take this very well to see a huge rate jump for utilities. I'd also like to comment that I don't have control over, since I'm renting, I don't have a way to kind of choose where my water is coming from, that's out of my hands, so I can't say like, just go to a rainwater situation, I just have to be connected to the city. Yeah, it's, I just wanna say, good, good luck, and it's my first time at a city council meeting as well, so I'm quite nervous, thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for making a comment.
Hi, Mayor and City Council, is this, it's working. So I would like for you all to consider that PG&E just had two rate increases, and they'll have another one in, in June, as well as your tax that you're considering running in November, as well as the county's tax that is possibly gonna run in November, it's a lot increase, a lot of increases for your citizens. Also around Tammy's question for hookup fees, I don't think that you can build them into loans. The RID got into this trouble, or this problem, when they had a huge increase out there, and they had to have their citizens pay that upfront, and then the construction loan wouldn't cover that, you know, cover that portion, and so they now allow for a payment plan on their hookup fees for two to three years, so that people can actually build, because it, it halted construction out in Shelter Cove when they did a huge rate increase. Their, their hookup fees, granted, went from like $10,000 to $35,000, but it, it was, it was astronomical. Just considering that, if you can do it over a five-year span, I hear what your finance director is saying, that you want to get to a place where you can just do small increases, but there are a lot of increases this year, and as everybody is well aware, PG&E has just skyrocketed, and it's not gonna go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Brian, I'm a resident of Fortuna, first time I've ever spoken at a city council meeting in Fortuna. And listening to the, maybe some more scenarios, none of us want a increase in anything. I have, for the last almost four years, kept my eyes and finger on the pulse of this nation and current events across the globe. I think that such a significant increase right now would be devastating. I'm in favor, I mean, everybody's gonna have to pay, I, I understand that, and we've gotta pay for, for all the services and the new lines and all of that stuff, I, I, I get that, but I think all of that, all at once, is, is gonna crush people. They're already under heavy, heavy fear in, in, in this country that we're living in right now, and I, and I just, please, take the time to consider smaller increments, maybe small, and then smaller, and then smaller after that, because we don't know what's going to happen next year. Things could get better, or things could get much, much worse, and so I'm not a doomsayer, I have hope, I love our country, I love Fortuna, I've lived here pretty much my whole life, born and raised in Humboldt County, and I want to be a part of this, a positive move in the right direction, and so I hope all the voters out there take that in consideration on voting day. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any online? Okay, we'll close, close public comment. And you're just looking for direction?
Yeah, and, and what I'm hearing is that the council would like us to come back with some scenarios and, and try to see if we could decrease the initial rate increase, not have such a drastic rate increase, you know, the one part I'm confused about is, you know, if we're gonna try to hit that 1.25, so I will, we'll, we'll bring it back and we'll try to develop a few more scenarios.
Okay, all right, and, and possibly check into seeing if the connection fees have to be paid upfront, and if they can't, or can?
Yes, along with the connection fees, we can look at incremental changes.
It depends on where your funding is coming from as well. So if, if you give somebody a contract and they get a loan for that, the loan officer doesn't sit and go line item by line item.
Okay.
And question, it depends on where the funding's coming from.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just, Brendan, did you have any other questions or comments from that?
No, I think, you know, again, really appreciate the time, and, you know, we very much viewed it as wanting to bring this item to the council and kind of, you know, paint the picture of where we are, and we do have, we do have some flexibility, I, I'm confident we can move some things around and, and largely, at least, meet the intent of, of, you know, keeping all of our various drivers, you know, in a, in a positive space, so we will work on that, we will bring it back, you know, for the council's review, and we'll probably try and do it in a relatively quick timeframe, we are trying to, you know, move quickly and get as much of this into our current budgeting activities as we're doing, so we will, we will come back at, at our earliest opportunity. So again, appreciate the public's comment, appreciate the council's comment, and we'll keep, we'll keep shaping it until it's something that, you know, we all feel confident in.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things, council, and maybe for Brendan and Kurt, we do have some special budget council meetings, but would the council prefer to see this at a regular meeting? And we have some special budget meetings, Aaron, I think we have one on May 2nd, and I think we have another one.
We have one on April 26th, I believe.
That might be a little quick to turn around, but if we can do that, would the council be opposed to us bringing it back at a special budget meeting, or would you like to see it at a regular council meeting?
Special meeting's fine with me, I am not here on that next budget meeting, but I can review the paper.
I think it should be on a regular meeting, I think it needs public discussion, and there's gonna be more public at a regular meeting.
I was just gonna say the same thing, the public's very interested in this, and I think that they would like to see this too, so it would be nice if it, if it could be televised and at a public meeting.
Yeah, okay, I mean, the, the option would be to bring some of the scenarios forward, and then they would go back ultimately for direction to council then, but we happy to bring it back to a regular meeting.
Does that give us time for the Prop 218 process prior to budget adoption? What's our schedule on that, too?
Yeah, I, I was gonna throw the comment in there, so for us to make our targeted budget adoption meeting, which is June 17th, we would need to issue our Prop 218 mailers by the end of this month, by the end of April. So if we do take it, and I, I, I hear what everyone's saying, and I tend to agree, you know, this is a very public process, and I think doing it in a more public setting would be appropriate, it would push us past that budget adoption, that being said, I think, you know, we could work together for ways in which we could still figure out how to, you know, get all of these things moving and buttoned up, either before the turn of the fiscal years or early in the next fiscal year, I don't know, Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to add on that, or if we did get a little bit further past our initial target date?
I think we'd have to take that in consideration if we're starting in, say, August or September, to ensure that that fiscal year meets the bond, you know, ratio, because we'll have one or two months less of that increase in revenue, so that may play into it as well, but we'll take a look at all of it and make sure we come with a solution that meets the bond ratio, but doesn't do too much more, at least as one scenario.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next one, initial review of proposed ordinance and resolution seeking consolidation. Staff, go.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Trent. I'll provide a little bit of background and then I'll hand it over to Ryan to kind of review the draft resolution and ordinance. But just a little bit of back, the item is to consider and provide direction to staff regarding the proposed ordinance to increase the current 3/4% transaction use tax by another 3/4%, which would increase the current tax to, from 3/4 to 1 1/2. And consider providing direction to staff regarding a proposed resolution submitting the ordinance to the voters. A little bit of background, in November 2016, a majority of voters approved a local 3/4% transaction use tax, which is known as Measure E, with the intention of funding previous cuts to public safety and to help maintain and enhance public safety services, support local businesses, provide essential services, and stabilize the city budget. The tax was originally set to expire on March 31st, 2025. However, in November 2020, a majority of voters approved the extension to March 31st, 2033. Measure E revenues are essential for the city to maintain and continue to approve, to improve essential city services and maintain a balanced budget. The city, just like the public, continues to see increases for, in cost, providing essential services since 2016 and additional funds are necessary to continue to meet current and projected costs. Over the long-term, cost to provide services that depend on the general fund, including police, general services, parks and recreation, will continue to increase and ultimately require nearly all the funding generated by Measure E. Just a few comparisons, in fiscal year 2022, 2023, the amount of funding in excess of what was needed by the department's normal operations that could be used for special projects and designated by the Measure E committee was $785,000. With the escalation of costs for items such as healthcare, fuel, wages, equipment and materials increasing, in some of those cases, double digits year over year. The amount available for special projects has diminished to $375,000, a decrease of over $400,000 in just two years. You know, some of the big costs, healthcare, we're seeing double-digit increases year after year. I think we just got our notice that this year we're going to see another 13%. That's just one example of how the city's seen some of those costs go up. One of the things that makes it difficult for the city is the city's compensation for employees is generally lower than the other Humboldt County cities in the county, and it makes it difficult for the city to retain and attract quality employees. For example, some of the police bonuses being offered by Arcade and Eureka of $50,000 and then higher wages in excess of 10% of what the city pays make it difficult for the city to compete for quality law enforcement staff. A special study session was held on April 1st and the council expressed its desire to amend Chapter 3.13 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to increase the current tax rate from 3/4 of a percent to 1 1/2%. The council further directed staff to bring back a proposed ordinance implementing the above referenced option for initial review and discussion with possible final adoption on May 6, 2024. So I can hand it off to our city attorney to go over the next steps and including the resolution and draft ordinance. And I know the council may have some comments on, you know, how this presented. Is it a doubling of what's there or is it an additional tax that comes in on a different date? And so we'll be able to get into some of the ways that this is written and, you know, what the language is in that resolution and ordinance in this meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Merritt. So there's really two pieces to putting a measure on the ballot. The first is the actual ordinance that would be submitted to the voters. That would be what they were voting yes or no on. And the proposed ordinance is in draft form as Attachment B to your staff report. And as Merritt says, it increases the existing tax from 0.75 to up to and including 1.5%. Now, the council would have discretion to go below that on an annual basis, but not above that without seeking further voter support. The draft ordinance also maintains all other provisions of the existing transaction and use tax, including the expiration date of March 31, 2023. It maintains the independent audit requirement. It maintains the Measure E Oversight Committee. And it also maintains the right of the voters or future city councils to repeal the measure in the future. It is a pretty straightforward ordinance that simply adds a provision for both the transaction rate and the use tax rate to authorize an increase to 1.5% effective April 1, 2025. The other part is an actual resolution that does a number of things. It submits the ordinance to the voters. It requests that the county elections office consolidate the city's election on the measure with the statewide general election. It agrees to reimburse the county for the costs of conducting the city's election. It sets dates for arguments for and against the measure. It authorizes the mayor to submit a written argument in favor of the measure on behalf of the city council. It requests the city attorney prepare an impartial analysis. And it also includes the actual language of the ballot question itself. And that is on page two of the draft resolution. And so you'll see in the box with the selections for yes or no, the actual text that will appear on the ballot. And the council has some discretion as to how they want that question presented. It obviously has to be fair and impartial. It does have to state the amount of tax that is estimated to be raised on an annual basis and the expiration date of the tax. Other than that, the council does have some leeway with how the question is presented. This question is very similar to how Measure E was originally presented to the voters because it is funding those same services. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does the council have questions? I have one. What I'm kind of feeling like I don't want to put this together because then if we put the, if we, if we put a new one added on to this one, they both expire at the same time. And if those expire and we don't get it renewed, the city cannot pay their bills. We'd be laying off a whole lot of employees. It would be devastating to the city. So if we did a separate transaction, you know, to it and so they, so they don't, you know, go together. If one of them did, we would, we wouldn't have to lay off as many employees or cut back as many. But we won't be able to function if we lost both of these when, you know, when they go to, or go to expire, you know? It just, so I kind of want to look at that option instead of, you know, trying to redo this one, just go forward with a 3/4% tax. And am I correct in saying for $100 spent, it would be 75 cents added on to that?
Correct.
So, you know, so it's, I mean, it's not devastating and the thing that I, you know, it's not just our citizens that are paying that, it's everybody. And Eureka already has, I mean, it's what Eureka's already paying. You know, now they're already paying this amount. So we, it would just, you know, make our tax the same as Eureka. So it's, it's not going to really increase in its, in its equal. The more you spend, the more tax you pay, the less you spend, the less tax you pay. So I kind of would like to do a separate one.
Sure. And we can do that. Usually separate taxes are used when the additional tax is funding different things. And so you'd have a different oversight committee. But that's, there's no reason why we couldn't authorize this increase with a different expiration date while maintaining the same public safety, public service expenditure goal and the same Measure E Oversight Committee. The one thing I'd say is expiration dates are often hotly contested in elections. You know, the original Measure E, I'm blanking on how long that was originally authorized for, but it wasn't long because it helps to give the voters some level of control over when they'll get to make that decision again. And so we can certainly go beyond March 31st, 2023. It does make it more difficult to sell it to the voters because that is often a key thing and it's why in the statute, you have to put in the ballot question itself, the expiration date. So just something to consider, but we certainly can go beyond 2023 for this additional increase.
Okay. Any questions from Councilmember Losi?
I hear what you're saying, Tammy. And I, and I just hadn't given that idea as far as having, if there is a new tax that's passed to have that extend beyond the 2020 or 2033 date. So I don't know, I'll have to think about that and I know the timeframes are getting close here. But I do, I think the increase is necessary and I like, as opposed to other types of increases, I like the sales tax increase primarily for a couple of reasons. One is that this maintains all the current provisions and the Measure E funds. And number two, it earmarks all the funds to be used within and for the city of Fortuna. And the increase amounts to everybody who purchases any items in the city pays, pays the tax. So it includes people that come into Fortuna and use our services but don't necessarily live here, as well as the residents in the city. So I think it's one of the most fair taxes, even considering the economy, the way it is. I think we just need to do something here to increase revenue for the city to maintain the services that we have. If we don't, I do believe that there will be unnecessary cutbacks. So that's, that's my comment.
I agree with what Tammy said about it being devastating to the city if we, if they did all expire at the same time. But on the other hand, I think that trying to do it as a different tax measure, that we're probably fighting a losing battle, whether, instead of just trying to increase what we already have. People know what we have, they're familiar with it, they know what the funds are going to. And if, I think it would be really easy to say no if we just say they think it's a separate tax measure.
I agree with what Chris just said, too.
And the question on the ballot, if I remember right from just reading it a second ago, is shall the tax be increased too? I don't know that it's tying the two together to the point of making where if this new one fails, it's going to remove the existing one. I think that was the point Tammy was questioning was if this fails, does she, it looks like it to her that it removes the current Measure E. Is that correct?
It's not. So if the, if the ordinance doesn't pass, there's no part of it that would be affected. So our existing Chapter 3.13 would remain unmodified and in full force and effect through 2020 to 2033. Now, we would, you know, we're getting years down the line, but typically we would go back to the voters for an extension of the 2033 date a few years before. So for budget planning, we know that the voters are willing to authorize an extension beyond 2033, well in advance of 2033. That's what we did with Measure G. I think it's G, to extend Measure E from 2025 through 2033. We went out a few years early.
So would it make it, make it a little bit more explanatory or easy to understand if you said this one was to replace the current tax measure and add an additional 3/4? I just don't want people to think that we're adding another tax on top of the one that we already have.
Yeah, I see. We are essentially increasing our existing rate and that is what the voters are being asked to do. We, we could play with the language a little bit to authorize the 1.5 rate in and of itself without calling it an increase over the existing rate, just to modify or put in place a 1.5% rate. We, I can play with the language and bring back a few options on the next resolution for ballot question, but I understand the concern.
Mayor Trent, one suggestion, too. One of the things that's been, I think, a real visible success of our Measure E funds is parks improvement as well. We're planning on a Newburgh Park expansion, which would heavily rely on this happening. We were able to upgrade the city's basketball courts and a number of other parks improvement projects. So, I mean, the one language suggestion I would have, too, is to say parks maintenance and improvement, just to capture that because it is a big part of what we would do with some of those special funds, I think, moving forward. You know, in one year, we put almost a million dollars towards the Newburgh Park expansion project, but we're going to need more to finish that project. So that'd be one suggested change for this language.
I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I'd also like to put in, you know, something about fire, you know, helping, being able to help the fire department a little bit, you know, not, not really naming what, but to be, to be able to, you know, so like if they needed a piece of equipment, they could come to our measure. Well, like when we do the advisory committee come and say, you know, we, we would like to have a new Jaws of Life or we would like to have, you know, something to. And then another thing I was also kind of considering is possibly doing, like we have a, we have a incentive for living in the city, maybe offering our employees an incentive if they became a volunteer fire department, or fire personnel. Because the fire department's having a hard time getting enough volunteers, so that might help, you know, them get a little bit, but not cost the city a whole lot to do. Something simple like that.
I think we have to be careful about mentioning the fire department because they're a separate entity. I think if we put it under public safety and then we can, and just, it will be known if anyone in public safety has needs, they can put a grant request in, like all of the other departments have to. Because even our police department, they have to put forth ideas to the Measure E committee. It's not guaranteed just because they're the city of Fortuna Police Department. But I do think we have to be careful about mentioning the fire department since they are their own entity.
That, well, the county did that and they, they're, all of their, are their own entity, you know, and they, they're named and they're, there's, you know, so I don't, is, can they, can they be, can we say that we want to put some fire or help fire?
Yeah, I mean, this is a general tax. And so the council can expend the revenues, you know, as it sees fit on any general purpose that comes within the jurisdiction of the city. So yes, the city can, through its grant program or through some type of finding that funds provided to the fire district are being used and consumed within the city of Fortuna, there is that option in the future through some type of MOU with the fire district. Whether or not it goes in the ballot question is totally up to the council. You know, it, it does talk about essential services. We could talk about public safety. We could say fires, you know, fire suppression. These are all ideas that the council has in mind that the measure would fund. So that would be at the discretion of the council as to whether or not that specific language would go in the ballot question. It, it could also go in the recitals of the ordinance or resolution and not in the ballot question itself. But again, these are expressions of desire at this point and it'd be subject to the normal budgeting process as to how the Measure E funds are expended year over year.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Any questions from Councilmember Losi?
Nope. I'm good.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Sue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Would you like to make a public comment?
I would, thank you. So I think we're getting into some really scary, uncharted territory when we start talking about the fire department. When, at the last meeting, the special meeting, when the numbers were being ran, if this were to pass, the city's going to outgrow it fairly quickly. Measure E's only been in place for a few years and we're already outgrowing it. There is not room for providing all the city services that we need and including the fire department as well. There's just no money. And the amount that we could give the fire department isn't going to change anything for them. It's not going to be enough to buy new equipment. It's not going to be enough to buy a new fire engine. And when Russ and I talked after the last meeting, and I don't know if Russ is there or not because I can't see anybody, he came away saying there's not enough money in there for fire. there for fire, too. So I think that we need to be really careful about commingling these funds. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, CNN will close public comment. What are we looking for here, just?
Yeah, I think the main item is direction, you know, whether we want to separate the tax. I think I've got, we'll play with some ballot and give you some samples, some options to choose from for your next meeting on this. But the big question I have in my mind is, what does the council want to do with the expiration date? Do we want to leave it March 31st or 31, 2033? Or do we want to have a longer horizon on this particular increase?
I personally think it'll be easier to add this on and then change it later, like we did with Measure G, than it would to convince them to have another ballot that's going to say that this is the same, and this is just an addition to what we're already doing. I think that'll go over better than if we're trying to do a separate one with a new date, and now we have two. So now we have to kind of do this skip jump voting cycle, and I think we're just better off just doing what we did with Measure G and increasing the date when it comes closer to.
I agree.
It makes a whole lot more sense to just add this on to the existing and go forward with that.
I also agree with what Kyle said.
Okay, well, I will return with the same ordinance, but an updated resolution with some options for ballot languages, and we can wordsmith it prior to final adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Now we have oral comments from the public. Anybody in the public can comment on anything that is not on the agenda?
Mayor Trent, there's Item D.
Oh, sorry, skipping it. Item D, police department plaque.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. This should be a pretty quick and easy one, so I hope to, let me just pull up a PowerPoint. I wanted to show you a couple of pictures. Can you allow me to share? There we go. All right, so this is just a quick discussion item. I think everybody's anxiously awaiting the completion of our new police facility, and there was a request from a council member and the mayor to be able to put a dedication plaque. There's a perfect rock that was placed right out in the front of the police facility that will accommodate a 14 by 20 plaque. And I just wanted some direction from council. This is kind of a concept that I think Councilmember Losi and Mayor Trent kind of both had ideas, and this seemed like something similar. And I don't necessarily want to get a lot of design review on this right now, but really, if, count one of two things, if the council has input on this design, I can show you a couple of others' options, but this is really one that has kind of an abbreviated motto that was put together by the chief, dedicated to the city of Fortuna, to the brave men and women of the Fortuna Police Department. May the values of honor, courage, and commitment forever guide their services to the community. So kind of an abbreviated statement and a dedication date, and it lists some city staff, police chief, we could move those around, and it lists a Fortuna City Council. We had another suggestion of one, maybe just to give a longer narrative with a dedication date, which is similar, but a larger, a longer version, or to kind of shove both together. I guess what my hope would be is if the council is happy to have, you know, one of two things, if the council wants to weigh in on this design, it's a pretty small thing, great, and I'm happy to bring whatever the final design is back, or if you want to appoint one or two members and just to give me direction, and we can finish this up, that would be great. But I just wanted to make sure the council knew that we were thinking about something like this, and we're open to comments or direction from the council.
Okay, have any comments from the council?
I like the one you got up there now. I mean, it does everything.
Yeah, and there might be some minor tweaks. I want to talk to Councilmember Mobley, she might want a K instead of a CHR. Some minor changes, and we might move the police chief in line with the rest of the city staff, too. So we might make some minor tweaks, but if you're good directing staff to finish up and use a design based on this, we're happy to proceed. We're hoping to do a dedication sometime in May after we move the patrol division over there, but before we have dispatch, we can't have the public, you know, when we have dispatch operating. So our hope is to be able to do this sometime in May. We're expecting to have our patrol division in there around the end of the month, like last week of April, first week of May, and then dispatch wouldn't be until June. We're waiting for Calo, he has to move the servers and the RIM systems over at that time, so we're waiting for them. But we're thinking about having a nice grand opening at that time, and we'd like to be able to have the plaque and unveil it at that time. So that's why we brought it to get direction tonight.
I'm good with whatever Chief Day and you and Brendan decide.
Okay.
I like the one, the first one there, the one that you just had up there.
I agree with that, too, the first one. Okay, I guess we can, you could, I mean, if there's tweaks you want to do on it, or...
But something general, okay, if the council's agreeable, we'll finish that with maybe some small changes and bring that back.
Okay.
And make it happen.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, now we'll move on. Oral comments from the public, anything that is not on the agenda? Anybody have a comment on? Any online or on Zoom?
Sue, do you have a public comment for any item not on the agenda?
I have a public comment for the last item that you just talked about, that you did open for public comment.
That'll be perfect.
Okay. I don't know that the current council should get to take all of the credit for the police department. I think that Jeremy Sandfield and I had a huge part in that as far as making all the decisions to provide the funding and all of the things, and I think that probably our names should somehow be included on there.
We could add, sorry, Mayor Trent, we could add former council members of the council desired and expand that list. And this project, a lot of the funding decisions did happen in prior council and were affirmed and increased during, with this council, too, so.
I agree with that.
Well, I think the only two people would just be Jeremy and I, is that right? So it's not like there's a big, long list.
There could be. There are, there were, there were discussions about the police department that went back to before 2011.
I think if we, I think if we took a look...
There were, but when they picked out this particular plan and this particular funding, that only went back one council beyond where you are now.
Well, and then, I just, I think the way that plaque looks right now is good.
Of course you do, because your name's on there.
Well, of course.
Anyway, those are my comments. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would again say, I would defer to you and Chief Day and Brendan. If we are going to make changes, though, I think Measure E probably should be acknowledged, because a lot of the tax dollars did.
That's a, that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, we should have Measure E sign on the side of it, till it's for the first year.
Yeah, a whole wall.
Okay. Now, I guess I'll close public comments, since there's no oral comments from the public, and we'll move to the consent calendar. Anybody have anything from the consent calendar to pull?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull H.
H? Okay, anybody else have anything to pull? I will pull F. So go ahead, go ahead with yours, Councilmember Losi.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate Public Works for the job that they did with Ronerville Road and Newburgh Road, Fortuna Boulevard, and Ronerville Road and near Loop Road. I know that those inconvenienced the public and an area where I live, but you guys, they did a great job. Bob Knapp alerted as many people as he possibly could, and they just, I think it was handled very well. So congratulations on that.
Okay, thank you. On, my question was... Finding it here, pulling it up. On the transit part, it says that we have 1,183 less riders than we had in 2023 at this time, and I think that might be a mistake, because every single month we've had more. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So we'll double check it, just because they can't hear, unless you're in a mic, but we'll double check that number and bring it back.
Okay. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion, we approve consent calendar, Items A through AM. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, we're finally to business. Approve a supplemental budget request for additional professional services and maintenance and improvements to Fortuna Monday Club. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So I'm going to show you some more pictures. I got the fun ones tonight. Give me one second to pull this up. Okay, so this first item is to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $6,000 for improvements at the Fortuna Monday Club and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a sole source contract for professional services for the conceptual design of the city-owned lot at 624 Main. The Monday Club sustained substantial damage from two earthquakes in December and January of 2023. The city filed a claim with our risk pool and received a payment in the amount of $56,717 on November 6th, 2023. The council approved a supplemental budget request for the design and repair of the chimney in the amount of $10,000 with Alteer Architects, Alan Alteer Architects. It was originally anticipated that Adelier Architects would provide the engineering details necessary, but staff are now anticipating using Woodchurch Engineering to provide those services under the city's on-call contract with Alan Adelier Architects, and currently the engineering design is estimated at $2,500. One of the things we're looking at this project, you can see in the picture, you can see the Monday Club chimney, that has been demolished. The paint on the building is peeling and fading, and the building itself is in general need of some modernization and updates, and it seems like a prudent time if we're going to be putting a new chimney up. We don't want to have that adjacent to a lot of peeling paint. So there's a few things that we want to incorporate into this project that require approximately $2,500 more in design fees. One of those is to plan for the repainting of the three sides of the building that were not repainted after the fire on the adjacent lot. The paint is in extremely poor condition, it's peeling and cracking on three sides of the building. Lead abatement will be necessary for the spot repairs around the chimney, and typically contractors do that work would come, the last time we had it done on the other side, they came from Redding. And so what we'd like to do, instead of just having them come and abate the areas around the chimney that would be repainting, is just to do the remaining three sides and finish that. Again, it desperately needs paint. It would be nice to abate the lead and have clean paint on the remaining three sides and not have to come back twice and do two mobilizations for the lead abatement contractor. One of the other things, I don't know how many of the council members of the public have been at the Monday Club lately, but there's really some antiquated lights and blinds, some of the blinds don't work, the lighting is hard to put into zones. And so one of the things, whenever we touch a project in the city, we kind of like to do a really good job and not have to come back again really soon for more things. So one of the things that we would like to do is update the lighting, and the architects provided us an anticipated fee to be able to update the lighting, and then I'd like to be able to paint the interior and then also purchase new blinds. And so I want them to put the specifications together for the, do a lighting plan, to do a specification for the blinds and the paint, so that we can get all of that done to bring it up. And it would just be for the main room only, the kitchen and offices and the other rooms don't need it. So it's really just the main room. And then one of the other things we'd like to do is coordinate with a concert series, and if we're going to be doing some wiring, to make sure that we can get some lights that would be suitable for what the needs are for use of the stage for various purposes as well. So that is, that's my thought on that. And then lastly, to develop a conceptual plan, in the picture in the lower right, you can see with the entrance, it's really a gorgeously kind of landscaped, the house that burned down was there from the 1800s, and so they have some of the mature landscaping. And so what I'd like to be able to do is to develop a concept plan for that lot, so over time that we could figure out a phasing plan, whether it's using city staff to do small pieces at a time, or volunteer efforts from service groups to be able to come in and do that. But if we don't have a conceptual plan, then it's going to be really difficult to, you know, figure out, you know, we need to know what the overall plan is for parking, for a courtyard, or whatever the case may be. So I'd like to develop a concept plan and be able to bring that to the public and bring that back to the council, so we can make some of those, some improvements over time in a phased manner. And so the estimated cost for that is about $3,500 for that scope. And what I have, here's just a budget summary, in case it's a little confusing of what we're asking for. So you can see that the contract right now we have is with Alteer Architects, and that's an amount of $7,500. What we do is increase that, you could see, by $2,500 for the interior modernization, so that'd bring the total with Alan Alteer Architects to $10,000. A $10,000 contract was already approved, but it assumed that they were going to contract separately for the structural engineering. So I'd like to pay Woodchurch Engineering separately the money to do the detail work to go along with architectural work, so I'm asking for another $2,500 there, and then $3,500 to do the conceptual design for the landscaping. So with that, the request is to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $6,000 for improvements at the Fortuna Monday Club and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a sole source contract for professional services for the conceptual design of the city-owned lot at 624 Main. And I will say that the architect that we'll probably want to use has already done some other projects for the city, conceptual design for the Riverwalk Park, the basketball court improvement project, and the Newburgh Park expansion, and she's willing to help the city out with this project out as well, and she's very quick and very efficient with her time.
Okay. Any questions from council? Any question from Councilmember Losi?
Yeah, just a real quick question. The conceptual design, will that include off-street parking on that lot?
I think that is one of staff desires, yes, to see some additional parking. That's one of the biggest complaints, is that there's not enough parking at the Monday Club. And so our thought is that we may be able to pave the alley and incorporate some spaces around the perimeter, but then still maintain some type of a courtyard and also somewhat secluded entrance by preserving some of the existing landscaping. But right now, that's just been staff's plan, so we'll probably engage in, you know, somewhat abbreviated public outreach process to talk to the different users of the Monday Club and have a public meeting, and then develop a concept and bring it back to the council after that.
That would be a good time to work the ADA parking, because the entrance is on that side of the building, and it'd be an ideal time to make the connection.
Absolutely. That's one of the pieces, is we want to be able to have that, right now, the accessible entrance is in the rear, and it just seems more appropriate to be able to have a grand entrance and have that accessible entrance be part of that as well. So it's not going to be the main entrance, but it's going to be, you know, just as equal to the side that fronts Main Street. And one thing I'll note, that in the staff report, we, our closing costs for the escrow for the building were about $11,000 less, so the $6,000 could come from what was remaining originally, from what was anticipated to be needed for the purchase of the property, so within those existing budgets. And any construction would, I'd have to, we'll be bringing that back to council when we have more firm numbers.
Okay. Questions? We'll open public comment. Anybody in the public have a comment on this item? CNN will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $6,000 for improvements at the Fortuna Monday Club and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a sole source contract, professional services for the conceptual design of the city-owned lot at 624 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Our next item is authorize city manager to execute Clean California grant agreements for the North Main Gateway Project. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So another fun one, but this time I'm not going to ask the council for a supplemental budget request. We have some grant funding identified for, for this project. Let's see. So the request is for the council to authorize the city manager to execute a Clean California grant with the California Department of Transportation for the North Main Street Gateway Project. This is a project that, really, it came to light several years ago with our former police chief, and there was a leadership group that really wanted to do something profound, much like the Kenmar sign, like the gateway sign at Kenmar that was done at a leadership group. But it was a particularly challenging spot. It's part city right-of-way, part, part Caltrans right-of-way, and so it's the triangle that is at the very north end of town. I should probably put a map in here of where that is, but I'll show you some comments. But there's been a lot of comments from the public over the years of, hey, how can we make a gateway project at the north end of town and make that look better? Staff learned of potential funding from Caltrans, and last year we started working on some concepts with them to, and, and looked at a targeted funding amount to do that project. But we were all ready to go, and then that, the funding evaporated. So now they've come back to us. They have additional Clean California project. They would like to fund the city's project to beautify that North Main Street and the two median islands. And so we've, they have somewhere between, we think, you know, 100 and 150,000, maybe more. We have to finalize our estimate, but it's at a minimum of 150,000. So we worked with the landscape architect with Caltrans to come up with a few ideas, and I'm just going to say, these are very draft concepts that were, that were developed in one day, but they give you a sense of what we could do. Just if you can see the screen in my cursor, you can see Sea Crane and the old bowling alleys at the top of the screen. You know, that's North Main, where it goes to Highway 101 on the northbound off-ramp, and then these are two current concrete median islands that are not very attractive and have weeds grown in the cracks. But this is one of the concepts, we were just trying to think of things we could put in there. The smaller median island, it's going to be tough to maintain, where, you know, so one of our thoughts is, could we put some decorative concrete on that smaller island? You know, maybe get some shrubs in the middle, and then have a little bit of decorative stamped concrete around the outside, maybe to match the cobble wall, but with some landscaping and then potentially maybe an art sculpture in the middle. It could look something like this. It could be anything, it could be different, but this was, again, a quick concept. Another idea was, can we have a gateway sign, whether it's "Welcome to Fortuna," or, you know, I don't know, "Thanks for visiting," or whatever. It could be some type of gateway sign that would, you could see when you're approaching, and then when you're leaving. You know, and we'd like to be able to have something visible from both of those directions. I guess our thought right now is it would be nice to have a gateway sign. Perhaps we could tie it in with the themes that are at the current Kenmar interchange, you know, if we could have the, the circles with the seasonal themes, whether it's a fish, or an apple for apple harvest, or a bronc for rodeo, to be able to change that and have a seasonal kind of feel to that, to kind of get people in line with what the seasoning, the seasons are, and make them feel a sense of place here. There's some really nice landscaping at the New Sea Crane building, as well as some nice landscaping in front of Sunbelt Rentals, and it would just really help to beautify that part of town. So our plan would be to look at some of these concepts. How can we really make something that's low maintenance? One of the things, in talking to our Parks Department, they have plenty of maintenance. They don't need more, but I did bring this up with our Parks Lead Worker, Jesse Town, and one of the things that's nice about this is they could probably park and close off one of these ramps and have a detour that goes around, so you could close this off, park a truck. We're thinking about having a, kind of a four-foot decorative stamped concrete, so they have maintenance, so they don't have to work in the roadway and just possibly put cones up around the shoulder, but incorporating really low-maintenance plant species to be able to really make something that looks nice, but also isn't going to be a huge maintenance nightmare, and we would definitely include the Parks Crew there. We had a talk, Bob Natter, General Services Superintendent, and some representative from Caltrans came out today, and we really came up with some great ideas of how we could put something that looks nice out there. There's a requirement for, excuse me. There's a requirement for, to, to, to seek public input, and so we're considering scheduling a planning commission meeting to try to get input both from the planning commission and the public on what could happen there. We'd also reach out to the nearby landowners, so they could weigh in, because they're going to be looking at it every day from their businesses, and it'd be nice to have something that blends in there. One of the things Caltrans would like to see if we proceed with this is, as soon as they, we have an estimate in the funding amount, they would like the city to enter into a cooperative agreement. There's a draft cooperative agreement. I have not had the city attorney review these yet, but it's a pretty short fuse, and those are draft, and so we would have that reviewed by the city attorney. If we end up having a gateway sign or monument, they want to ensure that we maintain it. If we end up having an art piece, there's a separate agreement that they would want to ensure that we maintain that. It's not different from a lot of the other areas where the city intersects the state highway. They typically like when there's improvements for the city to maintain those where they cross the state highway. But again, the agreements that we put in there are really the boilerplates agreements from Caltrans. We don't know what the final funding amount is, but their program is ending. They are trying to spend all their money by the end of the fiscal year. They have said that they could go further into September, so this will be a very short-fused project, and I think we should take this opportunity. You know, it could be somewhere, it'll likely be somewhere between 100 and $200,000, but I'd like permission to run with this. Prior to finalizing any design, I would bring it back to the council for approval. Likely we'll develop, develop two to three options, run it by the planning commission, and I'd like to bring it back to council. And because we don't have the regular amount of time to go through this, because there's such a tight funding constraint, we'd probably look to the council to do a public interest, interest finding, and then seek informal bidding and get quotes from contractors for the work, so we know what it would cost before we bring it back to the council, so we'll have an idea of what those costs would be at that time. So with that, that concludes my staff report, and what I'm looking for is authorization to execute a Clean California grant agreement with the Department, California Department of Transportation for the North Main Street Gateway Project and approve the other related agreements. And again, I, they want the cooperative agreement signed before we start doing the design work, but we could defer the maintenance agreements until we have our final design and bring that back to council.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I prefer the one that looks like the one that we already have. That's my suggestion, kind of keeping those the same. And then I think you're just trying to hide Chief Stays' officers back there a little bit better when they hide over there.
It is not a speed trap.
It's been a long time coming, because I can remember, Bob might remember, hauling dirt up there in the 90s to plant flowers to beautify the entrance.
Yeah.
And so here we are now. We actually have something going.
Yeah, well, in this one, it really kind of fell in our lap, and it's one of those things where we don't want to turn it down to really have really an attractive-looking space, both coming into the city and going out of the city. It really doesn't look good right now, and, and so it, this will kind of jump to the top of the priority list, along with several other things, like our rate increases and tax, sales tax. So this one's a little more fun, though, because the money's going in the right direction.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Any pub, any comment from any of the public? CNN will close public comment. So you're just looking for directions? Oh, sorry. I forgot about you.
That's okay.
Your picture's not up anymore.
I'm, I'm not going to let you forget about me, though.
Sorry.
But I'm sad to, I'm sad to say that, and a little embarrassed, that I was in the first leadership program that the Chamber of Commerce put on, and it included about 15 to 20 members, and each group decided on some kind of a project within the city of Fortuna. And the project that our group decided on was the gateway project. And so we had several planning meetings, and the, the project was to put a, a big sign over the, the Main Street entrance. Well, you could imagine how big that would have to be, and then we ran into problems with regard to planning and talking to Caltrans, and that project just really never got off the ground. We looked for grant funding, and there, there wasn't. And so one thing after another, and, and this just didn't get, get done. And, and it's been needed for a long time. It's been discussed for a long time. So I'm glad that this came around. I'm glad that there's, that there's grant money for this. It's, as, as Merritt said, it's been needed for a long time. And if there isn't any further discussion, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay.
I will move to authorize the city manager to execute a Clean California grant agreement with the California Department of Transportation for the North Main Street Gateway Project and approve other related agreements.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Well, that was a fun one. Okay, now city managers report.
All right. So just a few items. I wanted to remind the council that we have a couple of special budget workshops coming up. One on April 25th at 10 o'clock AM here at council chambers. The next one, and is that correct? I heard the 26th earlier, is it 25th? Okay. Then the next one is at May 2nd, on May 2nd at 9 o'clock AM, and then our next regular council meeting will be on May 6th. So a lot of council meetings. The May 2nd study session is at 9 o'clock AM. Our next planning commission will be on April 23rd, 6 o'clock PM, and then our next measure, me, Measure E meeting date won't be until September, September 17th at 5:30. The next Rona Community Recreation Park District will be May 1st at 2:30 PM, and then our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting. Right now, they were trying to organize a special meeting for the 17th. I don't know that we're going to be ready. I had some questions about, that I wanted to review with the city attorney, so I may try to keep the regular meeting date and drop the special meeting. So that's where my, my, my thoughts are right now for that. Just a few things to report. We're working with Redwood Community Energy Authority on a grant to install EV charging station in the park between the Depot Museum and the Park Office. They, they presented a preliminary design. We had some comments, but it's a 100% grant-funded project that would be implemented by RCEA, and they're moving forward with that. I don't know if the council would like to see that before it comes back, but really there's a whole bank of ADA spaces. There's more that's needed between there, and we take the center two to leave the closest spots to the Depot Museum, and then also to the Park Office. We're, one of the things I'm going to be doing with our Director of Parks and Recreation over the next few days is meeting with some of our field user groups. One of the things in the approved fee schedule is field fees of $15. And, and, you know, one of the things I've learned, meeting with the Parks Department over the past several months, since we've had a change in leadership and a change in staff, is, you know, I think there's a lot of things that we can do better and work better with our user groups, and then we also need to consider what our parks maintenance and field maintenance crews need. You know, it's, they're really on a, on a, on a tight budget, and they don't often have the equipment they need. It's, we've had to go to Measure E to get mowers replaced, and, you know, it, they just, they run themselves ragged, and they're afraid to ask for the things that they need to be able to maintain those fields. And so what we really want to do is have a two-way conversation with our user groups, and we have them set up with each of the user groups, soccer, Little League, American Legion, I'm sure I'm forgetting one, Mad River, the fast pitch softball, and others. But really, just to think about those agreements, some of the MOUs, one of the high schools updated, but the rest of them haven't been updated, but we need to think about how we can fairly apply these, some of the user groups, they do all the work, like Little League, and then, you know, once the season starts, and other ones, they really don't do much, and no one's paying field fees, so it's not really equitable right now, and we need to do a little bit better on, on treating all of them fair and thinking about how we can best serve those groups, and then also recover enough revenue to make sure that our, our parks maintenance staff have what they need to be able to do that job that's expected. We end up in a very tight position, most springs, especially wet springs, where it's difficult. So we hope to have a, you know, some, a series of conversations to kind of learn and then also explain where the, the city's at. We're continuing to work on our solid waste compliance with SB 1383, and have been meeting with regulators, and I'll be bringing back a draft franchise agreement hopefully in the near, near future. One of the things that we're looking at is, one of the questions is, should we implement solid waste in recycling as a mandatory service? And then we're not going to have the capacity for organics for at least a couple of more years, but should we do it in incremental fashion, or should we bring it all on one time? And, you know, it's one more area with state mandates that ultimately will result in higher garbage rates, and just hearing the other conversations, it seems like whatever we can do to keep things as low as possible for the time being will probably be the council's direction, but we'll be bringing that back soon. I mentioned our IT contractor is starting to receive the hardware for the new police facility, so they're starting to install the server, security cameras, the phone items, so we're excited to have that happening starting this week. And then we continue to assist the Rona Community Recreation and Park District with the pool project, and there's just some really promising developments. The big one right now is, you know, the, the donation which looks imminent from McLean, and the district has also hired a architectural firm to do the update of the feasibility study and really get out to the community and talk about what the pool could be. There's just a really high priority right now to make it as appealing as it can to as many people as possible, not just lap swimmers, not just competitive, but, you know, families, you know, can we have exercise rooms? Can we, can we do a lot of things to really make it an attractive facility that make people want to go there? And that's really how that will be successful, if there's really a demand for that. But the city desperately needs recreation opportunities and to have a place where you could have birthday parties and maybe a splash pad, and, you know, a programmatic pool where you could have programs for seniors or youth and swim lessons, as well as a, a larger pool. So there's going to be a lot of things happening in the next two months with that pool consultant. They're going to, the district's waited a long time to do the public outreach, because the question, everybody can tell you what they want and what you think would be great, but until you can tell them what it costs, you know, you're, you kind of have half of the picture. And so we're excited to be able to bring those two things together and have a consultant that is really knowledgeable on doing this, and they had just a very clear process and thought process for, you know, how to seek that public engagement and, and how to maximize what the community benefit and use would be of that facility. So we had some great consultants to choose from, and it ended up being Core Design Group out of Santa, Santa Rosa, and they've done a lot of work, both locally and around the state. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Since we haven't still met, and sake of time, no report.
Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 8th, I attended a Fortuna Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. That was chaired by our Vice Chairman, Frank Mathis. Did an excellent job. We had members of the Odell Shelton family appear and talked about the memorial plaque that they'd like to see at the New, Newburgh Park Field. And they'd talked about how much Odell was involved in, in baseball, and it, it was not only just Fortuna, but he was a state commissioner for the American Legion Baseball for many years and was involved tremendously with American Legion Baseball in Humboldt County. So they had a discussion about that, and so that will be taken up by the, our Parks and Rec, Director, along with the commission and probably city staff, as to what, what kind of a plaque and whether to do it or not. I, I think that it, it should be done, so we'll see. There's a summer camp programming improvements that were talked about, changes in fee schedules, and, and we've, we've done that at the council level. And the play group transitioned to the Monday Club, and that's mothers with their babies and toddlers, and so that program is, is going on at the Monday Club. And then we discussed the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, changing locations. I don't know if Heather had talked to Merritt about that, but we discussed having those meetings in the council chambers where we could have the meeting recorded and zoomed if, if that becomes necessary for anybody. And that was pretty much it. I did attend the Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting on April 3rd, and Merritt gave a, gave a good discussion and talk about that just now for, with his report, but things really seem to be moving forward with that, the funding and everything going forward there. Can't call it a pool, though. That's, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
I have nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Just a couple things. I have a HCOG meeting coming up this Thursday. Just a couple things. I have a HCOG meeting coming up this Thursday. And one of the things I was, didn't know if Heather was, our new Parks Director was going to talk about it, but we, through the good graces of a community volunteer and some of curator Alex Service, we now have a Fortuna Depot Museum YouTube page with some of the digital, some of the tapes that we've had films digitized, and they are now up on the Fortuna Depot Museum YouTube page. And Alex has been working on the page to keep it nice, tidy, and accessible. So check it out. And that's all I have to report right now.
Okay. I just got back from visiting my grandchildren in Idaho. And I went to a State of the City lunch back there to see what the differences between theirs are and ours was. It was, it was very interesting. I wish I had their budget. They have endless money. But anyway, it was, it was interesting, but our State of the City was all, much better. And, oh, I attended the senior center ribbon cutting. They are officially open. It's a beautiful place. Go by and see it. They're going to have lots of activities there. So that was a lot of fun, and they had a really good turnout for their ribbon cutting and grand opening. And that's all I have to report. So we are going to adjourn to closed session, conference with labor negotiator, negotiated, I can't even talk anymore, negotiations, city negotiator, city manager Merritt Perry, employees, organization Fortuna Police Department, or Police Employees Association, Fortuna Employees Association, and Unrepresented Management Group, in accordance with Section 549, 54957.6 of the government code. Do we have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Oh, thanks. Keep me in line. Is there any public comment on closed session? CNN will close public comment.
Make a motion. We adjourned to closed session?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lousie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.